On our last work session of the evening, of the afternoon. All right, we will begin our work session on service contracts and, oh, Mr. Smith, you are back with us. I beg your pardon. Yes, Mr. Smith and Ms. Quinn, welcome back. Long time no see.
It's great to be here.
Ms. Quinn, are you leading us off on this one?
Actually, I am gonna kick us off and then I'm actually gonna turn it over to Roger Ball, who is our procurement director, and then Michelle Pratt is also with us. She's our coordinator in our procurement office, and I think many of you guys have worked with Michelle, so you guys know Michelle very well.
Absolutely.
And then we have Marty Smith.
Yes. Thank you so much. Proceed whenever you choose.
So this is a short presentation, and we're gonna kind of go through the PowerPoint to give you a little bit of background, and then Roger will focus on some of the recommended changes going forward. So I'm actually gonna turn it over to Roger now.
Okay, for today's work session, we've developed a matrix on the contract approval process for both the current process and the recommended changes that we're making to the current process. But before we move to the matrix, I want to provide some background on the procurement process, which I think will provide additional insight and clarity on the information that's present in the matrix. Purchases in FCPs are characterized, one more, we need to go to the next slide. Okay, purchases in FCPs are characterized as either goods, professional services, consultant services, or non-professional services. So these four purchase groups comprise our category of purchase in FCPs, and professional services and consultant services are emboldened because these two purchase groups are impacted by the changes that we're recommending to our contract approval process. There are two primary methods of purchase that FCPs uses to buy the bulk of the goods and services that we buy. There is a third one, sole source. That is a method of purchase that's used by exception, and it's used when there's only one source practically available for the goods and services to be procured. And for sole source, we have recently implemented a process enhancement to ensure more rigor in how those procurements are made. And we now have a request form, sole source request form, that must be signed by the assistant principal and the sole source super, I'm sorry, assistant superintendent, sorry about that, thank you, Michelle, and a sole source justification form that must be signed by a C-level executive. C-level executive as in a chief, at the executive level. And so I'll, I'm just gonna review pretty quickly the invitation for bid process and request for proposal process. For invitation for bids, or IFBs, these are solicitations that are issued to the general public, and the award is made based on the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, meaning that it's low price, assuming that the bidder is responsive to the terms and conditions of the solicitation and that they have capacity to carry out the contract and event that we decide to award. Request for proposal is very different in the sense that, well, it's the same in the sense we do. We solicit to the general public, but the proposals return and they're evaluated based on specific weighted criteria, and negotiations with one or more vendors is standard. An award is made as opposed to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, like IFBs. The awards for requests for proposals are made to the vendor representing the best value because the criteria process encompasses price and the technical capacity and financial responsibility and a myriad of different criteria that's incorporated in the request for proposal. Contracts for goods, professional services, consultant services, and non-professional services are awarded either by FCPs, Fairfax County, the state, or via cooperative purchasing arrangement. Now, I'll give you some examples of the types of contracts awarded by Fairfax County. Be office supplies. We have an office supply contract through Guernsey, who's the vendor, and IT support, laptops from Dell Computer. That contract is awarded through Fairfax County. Flexible spending accounts, integrated library management system, and I believe that is a current procurement that we're evaluating right now. Examples of contracts issued by state, server maintenance, Apple products, and vehicles. Cooperative purchases, just by definition, cooperative purchases, it relates to a variety of arrangements under which two or more government entities combine their requirements to obtain advantages of volume purchases, including administrative savings and other benefits. And it also includes situations where FCPs would ride or piggyback against other contracts that are set up by another agency. And we make use of cooperative purchases. That purchase tool, and an example of the types of purchases would be copiers, multifunctional devices, or network printers, and maintenance, repair, and operating items through a vendor such as Home Depot.
And we wanted to just provide a little bit of background information on this because these are the various different contracts that FCPs uses. So that means not all contracts are awarded by FCPs. Hence, there are different approval processes and the reporting information to the board. So we just wanted to provide some additional information about the various different contracts we do utilize purchasing goods or other services.
The previous slides provided background on the procurement process, and so I will now address two purchase groups that are impacted by the changes that we're making to the contract approval process. One is professional services. We are proposing no change to that definition. Professional services are those services rendered by members of a recognized profession, such as accountants, or like actuarial services, physicians, pharmacists, optometry. And typically, these technical disciplines are regulated and licensed at the state level. For consultant services, we are recommending a change in definition that builds on the previous definition and is more expansive. And this new definition of consultant services, any type of service required by FCPs where the vendor demonstrates discretion and flexibility in identifying organizational deficiencies and performance gaps, then makes recommendation to us on how to improve performance, close those gaps, and help us solve our business problems. Now, under the old definition, our focus was on firms making recommendations to FCPs, which included tangible products, solutions, and services that FCPs would later make. But the new definition includes, focuses on firms making recommendations to FCPs, regardless of whether that firm, you know, submits a list of tangible products, services, or solutions that would lead to a subsequent procurement by FCPs. So in a nutshell, it's any vendor that demonstrates discretion and flexibility in identifying organizational problems. They look at the organization, look at performance gaps, and they make recommendations on how we should improve our performance. And because of that change, we are now expanding, okay, the number of vendors that would be consultant services. And we ran some numbers based on our new definition, and I project that based on the new definition, we would probably have about 30 to 35 consultants that we would be presenting to the board for approval going forward. So that's just FYI. Examples of consultant services. These are firms hired to provide guidance and consult on how to develop an employee survey program. That would be an example. Firm that's hired to review training course offerings and recommend program enhancements. And also a firm that's hired to provide guidance and recommendations for implementing division-wide programs and systems. So these are some examples of what you now see as consultant services. We will now transition to the matrix on the contract approval process.
Well, people can pull it up on their.
Yeah.
There we go. Yeah.
All right, I'll provide a brief summary of the document. In the far-left column, there's category of purchase, and that comprises, you know, goods, professional services, consultant services, and non-professional services that I talked about earlier. And these are segmented into 1, 2, 3 groups. Contracts awarded by FCPs, contracts awarded by county or state, and contracts awarded to public entities. Now, going across at the header, you've got contract approval process reviewing recommendations, FCPs current. That's our current process that we have right now, today. In the second, in the third column, we have FCPs recommended. And the approval process is, the approval process that we're recommending, the change, and then the notification as well. And then the last column is the county process, and we wanted to provide that as a reference point so that you can see what the county is actually doing. Now, one thing I will point out, there are three green cells here on the matrix. And we highlighted those because we're essentially, by this recommendation, we're making, we're recommending only three changes. And these changes relate to consultant services. The FCC approval process is that the school board will be approving these with a new broader definition of consultant services. And then for the, as far as the notification, contracts under the broader definition will be approved by the school board and no longer reported in the Bray-Bran report. I thought I saw a hand, but anyway. Did I see a hand?
We're gonna wait. They're getting my attention, so I can call on them when you're finished.
Okay.
And while we broke in, and just so board members know, you probably already do know that the matrix is separate also. It's listed separately. That's easier to read on your computer if you're following along there.
Right, and the last green cell, the change that we're recommending is for professional and consulting services under contracts awarded by county or state. And for POs, we issue POs against contracts awarded by county and state. They aren't our contracts. We issue purchase orders against those. And for POs $100,000 and greater, we're recommending that we report those in the quarterly in the, to school board via Bray-Bran.
So that would be the initial stage that we would use a contract that's issued by the county. Currently, because the contracts are approved and issued by the county, when we're using that contract, we have not been notifying the board. And we felt, you know, out of full transparency, and that we should go ahead and notify the board anytime that we are using a contract outside of FCPs. So when we initially start to use contracts that the county had issued or by state, so when we start to use their contracts, we will be notifying the school board through Bray-Bran briefing.
One other thing I wanna, before I finish up with the matrix, I wanna point out is that for professional services and consultant services, over $100,000. Our approval process is more rigorous than the county's because for those items, $100,000 and greater, we present those to the school board for approval, and the county's purchasing agent submits those to the board of supervisors for information purposes. So ours is rigorous, and has been more rigorous, okay? And so I just want to point that out for professional services and consultant services.
And then kind of go over the next steps.
The last slide. As for the next steps, hopefully, we can gain consensus from the board today for these recommended changes. That's a goal of ours. And we also, as a next step, we're gonna review and update the applicable policies and regulations for implementation by July 1st, 2018. So those policies and regulations that need to be changed based on the recommendations that we're making, we will move to make these updates. And we have July 1st, 2018 because that's a cleaner break force in our fiscal year. We also are gonna continue to implement procurement best practices. Those are those practices that are developed in the procurement area so that our customers and our procurement staff will be more informed and more educated regarding the contract approval process as well as sole sources. And the last bullet is develop required procurement training for principals and program managers. That has been discussed, and that's something that we anticipate doing as well. So that concludes my presentation and the summary of the matrix, and I'm happy to address any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ball. We have several board members with questions, and I'm going to start with, and just keeping in mind that at the end of today's session, the superintendent is hoping to have the board consensus around moving forward with these. Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. Ms. Quinn, this has been a long time coming. I brought this to you over a year ago, so I am very pleased to see that we are making movement to, to, in our effort of continuous process improvement, increase transparency and ensure that we have tighter controls on how we do contracting. I welcome your changes to the definition of professional services because, as you know, the concerns that I had in the past is that we use non-professional services as a catch-all. And since they were non-professional services, they weren't necessarily very transparent. So we didn't always know what was going on. And so I think that an expanded definition of professional services is welcome, and I appreciate that. I do have a couple of questions. The first one is, what percentage of our contracts are done through existing county and state contracts?
Well, that's a little difficult to say. I don't have the data right now. I'd have to just kind of guess it. I don't know it right now. We haven't run a report. But I would say, in being privy to all of the different types of purchases that we make, probably 30, 35%, somewhere in that area, but I can certainly get some hard data on that.
Would you like to consider that as a next step?
Yeah, I would like it as a next step to understand what percentage of the contracts are essentially being carved out of the policy for oversight because they would go directly into a notification after the fact.
So just, that's correct, but we also wanted to share with the board that when we do have a county contract, we don't just rely completely on the county to issue the contract. Sometimes we do the work jointly, but because all the, the county's purchasing agent is actually delegating authority to our purchasing director to sign contracts, it's all under the authority of the county. So when we go into these joint contracts, they typically get issued through the county's process.
No, I understand that, but the reason this was brought to you was to increase transparency in how we were expending funds primarily in the non-professional services.
So we're hoping to provide that additional information to the board, to your point, through a Bray-Bran briefing when we do start using those contracts because currently, we have not been notifying the board through the quarterly report. So that's another change that we're recommending.
Well, you were supposed to be notifying us through a quarterly report on all contracting. Are you saying that we weren't being notified?
Because those were not contracts that FCPs had issued.
Okay, well, we welcome increased transparency, but I am still concerned that 35% is a pretty significant number. So I would like to know what percentage of those 35% fall in the $100,000 or more category because, you know, we do want to ensure that we achieve the objective of transparency on that. Additionally, if.
Excuse me, Ms. Corbett Sanders, are you thinking that that's a next step?
Yes.
For us to be also informed about anything that comes through the county system as well?
Right, well, if we are using.
No, I understand, but that you'd like to start seeing those even though we haven't in the past.
Well, I'd like to know basically what we're talking about because this could be a whole level of additional, you know, is it five or six contracts? Is it 30 contracts?
I'm just keeping track of the next step, so.
Yes, so I would like to better understand what we're talking about here because we face some challenges with a lack of transparency. And that's what we're really trying to do, is ensure that we have that transparency. Additionally, I was wondering if, why we were waiting until, actually, before I get to that, and I know that Mr. Moon had already sent a request about this, so I will let him go ahead and address it, but I am concerned about the aggregate that, you know, we issue, the initial contract is below the threshold, and then we add on to it within a relatively short period of time. And so we want to make sure that we adhere to our transparency objective.
So under the expanded definition of consultant services, those contracts would come to you. It's already written in Policy 5015 that contract amendments for $50,000 that would result in a $75,000 contract then going over the threshold would then come to you for approval.
Excellent. I appreciate that. And then my last piece is, why are we waiting until July 2018 to increase transparency when it's, if we're already getting the information in? I would err on the side of increased transparency as soon as we can get it.
Did you want to address the timing?
Is that a question? Well, we certainly could do it earlier, but the thinking was that, you know, we'd need to put the necessary structures in place to start, you know, gather that data and managing that data. And one July would be more in training as well.
So why don't we, why don't we take that spirit, and we'll have staff review and see if we can have a shorter timeline than what's been presented today. But I'd like to know a little bit more before making a commitment to early or not being able to deliver, but if we can make it earlier, we will.
Ms. Schultz, that's it. Thank you.
So I recently did this exercise for another endeavor, and I won't read the full thing, but senior manager of contracts and negotiation, manager of contracts, senior contracts representative, senior contracts administrator, headquarters procurement manager, those are just a few of the titles that I've had in the past. And that's why this has been concerning me for a very long time. If it is encumbering dollars, I don't really care who the letting agency is. If you are encumbering us over a certain amount under a contract vehicle, I think it's incumbent upon staff to let the board know. And I think that's what you were trying to get to while you were being stunned. I'm gonna pick up, I'm gonna make this like a, you know, a relay race. I'm gonna take the baton from you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. So I would say, and we can take a vote on this, but I'm hoping that every hand goes up. If it, if you get to encumbering under a single contract vehicle, a certain dollar amount, you need to let the board know because I think this is where we've gotten ourselves in very difficult positions in the past. So that's the first point. The second point is, if it's in the aggregate, not if it's, you know, 50,000 and then takes us. If we're approaching a ceiling and we're going to blow through in the aggregate services to an individual vendor or service provider, you need to let us know. I also think the question to me comes, what best practices according to whom? What is your, what's the measuring stick of best practices?
These are.
Because, because.
These are industry best practices in public procurement. There, these resources can be found through, mostly through the National Institute of Government Purchasing.
Okay, so you, so that's why I'm saying, I think you ought to say. I mean, just procurement best practices, that is a nebulous phrase. If there is an industry standard by which you are working, I think you need to reference the industry standard so we understand what the measuring stick is.
Good enough.
I also think, can you go back to the very first page, I believe? This one. So what about MOUs? What about LOAs? What about other contract vehicles other than a formal RFP? And I'm gonna bring one of my favorites, the 35-year-plus standing MOU with the county for SAC services that I've yet to see. Like, it's like, it's somewhere. I don't know how many kids are in SAC right now and how much the agreement, the agreement is between us and the county for space that reserves, brick-and-mortar slots inside our elementary schools for which we just spent half a day talking about the fact that we don't have spaces, and I can't touch and put my hands on some, you know, I mean, it's like, it's, you know, a wisp of the willows, you know, agreement out there.
Are you looking for the SAC MOU?
The SAC, the SAC MOU and all of the, over time, everything that's been associated with that is sort of just out there. So I'm assuming it means any type of agreement that encumbers dollars that are appropriated by this board.
Well, in this page, these are methods of procurement. These are the methods that we use to contract for goods or services. Invitation for bid, request for proposal being the major two.
I know. On the previous page, you had the types of services, and here you have the methods of procurement, but there's nowhere where you list all the vehicles by which, we're just referring, well, you know, some of it's county let. I mean, we're not referring to the actual types of procurement vehicles, the contracting vehicles that we're letting. And sometimes, this board has encountered situations, and I just gave an example, where there's this thing out there, and it's an MOU, and, you know, it feels like it was never treated necessarily as a contract vehicle. It was treated as a letter of agreement that's sort of. Yeah. Amorphous. So can I presume that going forward, we're gonna say that any type of contract vehicle, whether it is an actual contract, whether it is a, you know, whatever you're using, a purchase order, I don't know how you're actually physically contracting and committing our dollars, but even if it's an LOA, even if it's an MOU, that's gonna consider, be considered to meet the threshold that we're discussing going.
So you're correct, and some of the processes that we're trying to work on improving is getting that information notified through the central procurement office, right? Because some of those MOUs, it doesn't go through the procurement office, and it's one of those, if you don't know it, you don't know it, right? So we are improving our processes to ensure that it is going through a central process, hence why we're trying to develop this training. And if you notice on the last bullet of that next step, is developing that required training. We want every principal and every program manager to go through a procurement training course. So we're trying to tighten all those processes currently. So we understand what you're asking us to do.
So I have two more points to make, just for expectations. The next is, what about relationships? Relationships of the people involved or the organizations involved with this division and contracting with those organizations? So for example, I don't know, there's a book company, you know, out there, and the book company sells us lots of books or online. book company sells us lots of books, or online services over those books, then people in this organization going and speaking, either paid or unpaid compensation, speaking at those organizations. Where are we on the personal and organizational conflicts of interest? This is another thing that has been concerning me for a very long period of time, is the, sort of a mutually reflective conflict of interest statement as a part of this training.
You're bringing up all of our areas that we know we need to improve on, so that's another area where we have been tightening our policies and regulations about when you could go and speak, and when you can accept honorarium and all that. So all that is currently being revised, and we've been working with legal to try and tighten a lot of those activities that could be.
It would appear that, that the adherence to a set of principals, PLES, depends upon which principal, PALS, is involved, if we're talking at, at a building level or here, and that there is, you know, there is a favoritism of, well, we can contract with or let people into our building, you know, here, but not here. You know, so these are, it's like the obverse of the coin of conflict of interest is also a favoritism, and so it seems like it depends on who you are that you get to do business with FCPS, and then depending upon who you are, we may, you know, there's not necessarily an even hand. So I would like, whatever you're planning in terms of the training, we'll address that. And then, the last thing is, it's a little bit difficult, I have brought it up before, but since we brought up the buildings, are you under any expectation, or maybe I have to bring this up in a forum, I think it would be extremely wise for us to approach, and even if it is, you know, a mock, you know, side-by-side for a year, having budgets at school buildings, and including people, so that we understand what we're spending in one school building as opposed to another. And, you know, there are divisions, and there are large divisions that do this, where they hold the principals accountable, and you have, you know, an allocation of a certain amount of bodies, but you can have, as we were just in, think of our Table 7 from the previous conversation, you could have in a building, not only the contracting for consulting and for professional services that's happening that we're talking about here, but you could have, I don't know, 300 people in a building as employees, and everybody at the far right of that lane, those lanes, you know, so you could have everybody in the B-15, B-20, 30, Masters, PhD, so that, you know, two neighboring pyramid schools could look vastly different in terms of the resources that we're expending per child, and I don't think we have, honestly, I don't think we have any grasp of what we're spending in one building versus another, not only on the contracting side, but also on the employee side. And it is something that we have, you know, eschewed to date, but I posit that maybe July 1 might be the time for us to contemplate an exercise, and not necessarily for the sake of, you know, withholding people because of, you know, but I think you gotta figure out how much we're spending, building to building. If we're talking equity, if we're talking One Fairfax, if you find out that you're spending, you know, exponentially more in one building versus another, because we haven't been tracking how much we're spending, I think that's something that would help us have more helpful conversations going forward about both appropriated and unappropriated monies.
I'd say two things. One, we certainly have budgets for each school. We have, I mean, we have that information. I was a principal, I don't know whether we share at this level with the board, but we have those budgets. I mean, I got the budget and got the look. I think as we start to explore equity, one of the big drivers is going to be the experience of teachers in schools. So, I mean, if you wanted to see, you'd start to see that. Actually, one of the things that was happening in the prior administration, looking at Title I dollars, was to start to say, not only how were Title I dollars distributed, but teacher experience, which was the driver. But that means you would then say that money, that those teachers would have to be placed. So, I'm not, you could argue, we're gonna place those most experienced, too bad, right now, teachers are the drivers of where they get placed, right? Based on an interview, if they get an agreement, and then we have a transfer.
Well, I agree with you, and we may want to spend more in certain schools. I'm not saying that we have to spend the same, but what I'm saying is, we don't know. And, and I would posit, we don't know how much we spend per school, because you're only talking about the, while we allocate per student, that's not, that's an allocation that doesn't transfer to the actual people that we have in the building. So it's different, not to say market average or average per student, it doesn't, frankly, it doesn't work out that way, because we have people allocated to those buildings who earn different salaries. And then, and, and we don't know, I don't know what one principal is bringing in somebody for consulting services to help during, you know, a professional development, and this is another thing that I hear a lot about, very, very different situations, teacher-to-teacher led training versus hiring somebody in and bringing somebody in. So this school is, you know, spending X many thousands of dollars and bringing somebody in, and the other one is having teacher-led, teacher-to-teacher professional development. That's what I'm saying, it can be a very different experience in terms of teacher experience, never mind student experience, and I think it's something that we're gonna have to pay attention to as we tighten up these reins.
I'd make one difference, though, and I would share this with the board. I understand part of this is about fiscal transparency. There's also a part of operations, we have to decide the best method of what teacher learning looks like. Some of it's gonna be school-based, some of it's gonna be contractor, and, and I think we need to think about those things as separate things. I don't think, you all asked me in the interview about principal autonomy, we need to leave a little room in here that principals are gonna be able to have some dollars for professional development and decide whether it's best to do teacher-based, contract-based, based on the needs of their school. So, I'm more than willing to have this dialogue. Look, we're making a lot of changes that this board has asked to be made, right? Wait, 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 let me just finish. You all have asked for things, and in six months, you're seeing them happen. So I'm committed to continuing to do that, but I also want to make sure that we have a careful balance, that we don't drill in so far that our principals think they've gotta come all the way to the school board before they can decide whether to do PD in their school.
No, there's absolutely nothing about what I've said that has anything to do with principal autonomy. It has to do with the fact that principals are spending money for different things, and because it's gonna be way below any threshold we'll ever see, even with these tightened-up scenarios, that we're, we don't understand the impact of the spending decisions at the building level that will affect the teacher experience, and will affect student academics, student achievements, student outcomes. If one school is spending and bringing in, you know, speakers and authors and this, that, and whatever, in order to do PD, and another is doing teacher-led, one might be better than the other, I don't know, but under this scenario, if we don't track budgets by school level, we won't ever know.
Well, I think there's some work we can do in the budget piece, and maybe what I could do is talk with staff and figure out a way to bring to this board some of the work that we are doing around PD, so the regional assistant superintendents could be here in a roundtable and tell you what's working, what's not, and how we're, they are looking at what kind of PD in the school improvement plans that schools are doing, and seeing whether it's working or not. Project Momentum has really been drilling down more to go, is the work that we're doing with teachers in professional development, are we seeing that happen in the classroom? Just doing the PD doesn't mean necessarily that our teachers and educators go back in the classroom and actually put that PD into practice. So, I think there's more we can do. I just want to separate, one, the contracts and transparency around that, that may have been driven by a few things that this board experienced prior to my arrival, doesn't get, there's a pendulum that we want to just be sure, financial transparency and integrity, absolutely. I'm still wanting to leave room for, you know, school-based decisions about what's good for a school, and letting our, our school-based leaders have an opportunity to do that. And I think we're, I think we're pretty close to saying the same thing. I'll work on ways to get the PD message to you, and I'll think about the budget piece. I'd have to go back and look at the budget book to see how we currently break down our budget, whether it's by pyramid or region or what have you.
It is at the school level, and while we allocate positions, we do track the dollars. So the salaries and the benefits of those teachers get charged to those individual schools.
Okay, I do want to move
So all that information is in the detail sheets that are posted.
So we've got several other board members. Ms. Keys, Gamara?
Thank you guys for this information and the opportunity to work on these issues. I think we were all having the same dreams last night, concerned about some of the things that I know I heard even before I got on the board, and one of the things was this aggregate cost, and I know that someone mentioned a policy or reg that's in place, but I just want to make sure that we're actually covering something that you would say, well, this wasn't anticipated, or does it, you know, where you consider, this is it, this is a one-time deal, but then eventually it turns out to be, well, we needed it, and it looks like we didn't plan it, but then we did, and I just want to make sure, under any circumstances, if it goes over that threshold, it has to be reported, and that aggregate amount is what we're looking at, as opposed to the single individual contract. Because I think, we, like I said, we were all, maybe it was a nightmare, but at any rate, now, let's see. You said you were expanding the definition of consulting services, and can you give me an example of what would qualify now that previously wouldn't have? Does that make sense?
Okay.
Well, I'll just, I'll go back to the slide where we've listed the examples of consultant services. There. It'd be any firm that's hired to provide guidance and consultation to FCPS on how to develop an employee survey program, that would be. Anytime we are hiring a firm.
So K-12 Insight, for example, right? They did
You're looking for specific companies.
But wouldn't they have qualified in your definition prior to now?
K-12, yes.
Okay, I'm looking for something that would not have.
In the current definition.
I'm sorry?
In the current definition.
In the current definition.
Right.
But before you change the definition, they wouldn't have qualified?
They, that is correct.
Okay, okay, that's what I'm looking for, all right. And Karen already asked, Ms. Corbett Sanders already asked about the number, percentage of contracts that we're dealing with below the 100,000 threshold, so I'm assuming that will be a next step in terms of how we get that information? No?
Well, I think she
I was requesting information on that our contracts that are above the threshold, that are currently being contracted through county or state contracts, so we would not know about them.
Okay, so under 100,000 would be a different issue if you want to pursue that.
Okay, well, let me just say amen to that, I agree with that as well, but I want to know, like, typically, are we dealing with contracts under, the majority of our contracts that we're dealing with, are they under 100,000?
The majority of our spend at FCPS, dollars, is over $100,000.
Okay.
There are small purchases under 100,000. They comprise more purchase transactions.
Like papers and paper clips and that sort of thing.
Right, but based on the Pareto 80/20 rule, you know, 20% of our transactions comprise 80% of the dollars, and 80% of the transactions comprise 20. So there's large buckets of money, these are the 20% of the transactions that comprise 80% of our dollars.
Okay, so I guess I'm interested in the contractual services that we've been getting, let's say in the last year, where they fell under that $100,000 threshold. Is there any way we can kind of, if I have an idea of what's been falling below that that we would not have seen?
We certainly can provide a report on that if you'd like that.
And I think that's all the questions. I apologize, I am going to tip out, I have to drive to Richmond tonight, so, thank you very much. I'm gonna wait for the traffic to die a little bit.
Ms. Strauss?
Okay, I'm very comfortable with the changes that I know have been recommended, partly with the help of our wonderful new Auditor General dealing with sole source, and also with those contracts that will be provided through program briefing. The other contracts that are using the $100,000 threshold, I'm a little concerned that that's kind of a low amount for an organization of our size. That would be 30 to 35 contracts, and I guess a question coming to the school board, that would be on an agenda, we assume it'd be on a consent agenda, but that doesn't necessarily cause this, I remember we went down the OE road, which then soaked up the majority of all of our work sessions, and we didn't think that was going to happen, because in order to pull anything off the agenda item, it just takes one request. So my question is, in timing and the 30 to 35 contracts, is, would that be work that the school board and staff would be preparing in September, in August, and we would have all 30 to 35? I mean, what is, what is a workload expectation for both staff and the school board in, the school board's comfort in approving them?
Well, these are, these would be approximately 30 to 35 additional contracts. That would be spread out over the year, it depends on when the requirement is given to the Office of Procurement Services.
So that would be, and I'm just, I'm curious, the workload for everybody concerned?
So we would probably have to go back and see when those contracts were issued, to determine whether or not it was in the fall or the spring of the school year, so we could also kind of go back and look at that, if that's an information you're looking for.
And then, and the question
And then, from workload standpoint, I do think it does add some workload to the procurement office, because you do have to create the agenda item, it'll first go for action, and then we can't really award the contract until two weeks later.
So then that's my question, would it come for new business to the school board?
Yes.
And it would come for action, and then you would award it, so this would, so, and then if there, if the board had questions, it would come to a work session, so
This could delay awarding that contract, which would delay any work that we needed to initiate for that particular, whatever service it was for that work, but currently
Right, and that's what I'm curious, is just, is workload for everybody, and whether or not, if we assume that it is mostly on consent, a lot of the smaller contracts that we get for facilities are on consent, but we all, part of the issue with those is we have such a thorough discussion on the CIP and facilities, there is, there is sort of an understanding of all of that, so whereas this would be a new, a new understanding of vendors and requests, and why, and how, and so I'm concerned about workload.
But, but we're still hoping that we could put it on consent agenda to start with, right?
Yep. We're stepping out on faith here. You want transparency, you want honesty, you want to see it all. I'm hoping that every single board meeting, we're not gonna go through every single contract, every single page, but if board members went, oh my God, who is this, or what is this, and needed additional information, we could provide it between the time it's on for new business and then the next two weeks, and if it's still unresolved, it could be pulled off. I recognize things happened that had the board and the community lose trust. This is our attempt to eliminate that opportunity from ever happening again, and I am hopeful that, much like we do these contracts now with facilities, it's, it's on there, people look at it, there hasn't been one yet that's come and caused concern, I think it will be, there could be at the beginning maybe some knowledge base, what I would ask is board members that really had questions, that try, we could, we could try to answer those either offline, one-on-one, or in the brave brand briefing prior to the next board meeting. If there were still questions, then that might be something we'd have to pull off and do at a work session or explain there at the meeting. But I felt like this is something I've heard multiple board members say, and I want to get beyond the past, onto the future, it'll just become part of the normal course of events, and 99% of the time, you'll be fine, but I think it's been the 1% of the time when it wasn't fine, that has left concerns with board members and the community about the oversight of these contracts, and we want those concerns to be alleviated.
My, one recommendation
My one, one recommendation that I have is, is, because this, this will be a new understanding for board members, that if staff is coming forward with a, a consultant service contract that you deem to be pretty important, that you give lots of time when it comes to the Board, even for consent, as to when you deem you need to have this approved. So that if in fact, a lot of discussion or a lot of bring, brought up to speed, or even, you know, I, I don't know, because we've not, we have not gone through this level of detail coming to the Board for this number of services. And for transparency is great, but I would just recommend that you give plenty of, of lead time before it is that you are planning on using these services.
And, and I'd want to say, we've had the same conversation with staff privately. There might be a couple of times I'd come to you and go, gosh, I'd really like to expedite this in one night. We have a timeline because of these reasons and that you all would go, you know what, Scott, that's reasonable. And we'd be willing to go ahead and call it that night. And that's what staff is, that's frankly what I've told staff that I'm prepared to do with you all, and I am. I'm gonna be a straight shooter with you. If I go, you know what, because of certain things that have happened, we really need it on that one night, I'd ask you to give it consideration. But I'm hoping that the default will be that we can get this done within that normal two-week process and that our own staff.
And I guess that's what I'm recommending, that, that you may have to keep it more than two weeks. Because if, if you are counting on a service, we just don't know how this is going to go. So you may want to give it a month's lead time to make sure that you have whatever it is that you need for whatever project or school, what have you, that it actually rolls forward on the, the timeline that you are hoping for. That would be my one recommendation.
Mr., oh, go ahead.
Could I just add that, that nine times out of 10, the services contracts that will come to the Board for approval will come to you as a result of a request for proposal process where a committee has actually evaluated all the vendor responses and negotiated with that vendor. And so really, the Board would have two choices, to approve the contract or to not, which means we have to cancel that solicitation and start over. I just wanted to point that out because I think it's relevant.
Mr. Moon?
Just a couple of questions. First of all, if you could give me an example or two for contracts awarded by county or state?
Yeah, we've got the slide here for that.
You did have a slide for that.
It's, well, we have a slide, but it's, it's not on, it's not on the slide. I actually, I talked through it.
I'm sorry.
And the, you said Fairfax County contract. It'd be the Office Supply contract.
Office Supply, okay.
Which is a huge contract force. IT support contract, laptop computers from Dell, flexible spending accounts, and integrated library management system, which is a procurement that we're in the process of evaluating at, at this time.
Okay, what about?
I can add a couple of others.
Sure.
Our Aon Consultant for benefits.
Okay.
Okay, that would probably fall more into, in line with what we're talking about today. Our P Card program through JP Morgan was jointly solicited with the county. Just a couple more examples.
What about contracts awarded public to public entities?
So a good example of that would be a summer program where we send students to James Madison University for a week. It might fall under the threshold that we're talking about today, but those, those types of agreements.
Okay, because I see a different threshold for the amounts.
Right, right. So over, over the 100,000, I can't think of.
But this was $250,000 from the example you gave me.
It was less than that. I don't know of one over 250.
Could you, could you tell us then, I mean, for this particular, for this particular category, contracts awarded public to public entities, the threshold amount for the bold approver is higher than others, 100,000 versus 250?
Yeah, we tried to find some history on that, but that is how the current policy is written and we have yet to find any history why that particular process was $250,000. And I don't know, maybe Ms. Strauss?
Yes, it was simply because of, of the actual, as things become more expensive over time and what seems to be a reasonable cutoff in terms of, of notification and expectation for.
And then the 100,000 is actually in the county's purchasing resolution and the purchasing resolution is something that FCPS, our Board adopts every fall.
So, so let me ask you this way then, that contracts awarded public to public entities, do we have many of those?
We, we don't have many, but the one that we're currently working on, which we will be bringing to the Board, is the, the George Mason Cohort Program. That's a public to public contract.
Okay, so when you say we don't have many of those, would you say it's less than, you know, you know, earlier you talked about 35, is that less than, less than five, less than 10? And is that, is that all together less than 10? Or are just those above the threshold of 250, is it less than 10?
I would say easily less than 10.
For all together?
All together.
All together, less than 10. Okay, I want to give us some thought about that. And earlier, I know you responded to Ms. Karen Corbett Sanders' question about the amendments that, and that's going to be applicable to all the contracts where bold approver is required, not just a professional, but consultant, and also contract awarded to public, public entities above 250,000. And there is no limitation on the duration of the contract where you're going to bring it to us if it exceeds, it becomes to exceed threshold amount. Correct? Okay, thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, I'd like to actually invite our Auditor General to join me here because I wanted to have her not just answer a question for me, and I did check with her in advance, but I wanted to make sure the other board members, since this is our work session and she is our direct report and she is the one who, we hired and created the position and actually.
Would you like to come and join us?
Yes.
That would be great, thank you so much. And I think, yeah, probably sitting right there would be fine, so you have a microphone.
Yeah, grab, just pull it over. As many of the board members who were here when we created this position, the, the goal was for the Board to be able to have some financial, direct advisement and so, and independent advisement. And so I was just checking to see if she had had a chance to review these recommendations because it would be helpful for me since I'm not a subject matter expert, you know, based on what the Board had brought as a concern to Dr. Braebrand and, and said, you know, look, this isn't, first of all, Dr. Braebrand, I so appreciate everything you've been saying in the work session. I think you have communicated beautifully that you understand the value that the Board has in wanting to promote transparency and, and that we can just clear up both the Board's understanding and the public's understanding, especially when it comes to consulting expenditures. The Board was blindsided before you arrived by the Washington Post literally calling our cell phones and saying, what do you know about this particular contract? And we didn't know about it. And we needed to, you know, get an understanding of how did a contract that started out small morphed into something much larger and then became, you know, a little bit questionable in terms of how we arrived at it. So I, I do want to thank all the staff that's sitting here and my asking our Auditor General here is, is more so for me to just be able to say, is there anything else that, as we have to make a judgment call about these recommendations, is there anything more that we should be thinking about? I will say, no, I don't want to drill down to contracts at all. I mean, that is not our role and I appreciate this really great crosswalk and the business case model that's saying, you know, here's how the county does it. And once again, I, it looks like we're wanting to be a, a little more involved in, in our oversight, but it can be a good thing. But I will say at a very macro level, we know we have overcrowded classrooms in this county. And every 50 to $75,000 can create a new teacher position and enable us to reduce overcrowding in the classroom. So while we know we need to have strong professional development, we know we need to really utilize consultants because sometimes it is a lot less expensive to the system to bring in a consultant to do a limited job versus to have them on payroll. So I, I'm not against consultants at all. But when we've gone through some of our toughest budget years, there are consulting contracts that the public brought to us and we as board members could not answer why that was a priority versus getting another teacher into the classroom. So for us to, I think, help strengthen the public's faith in our governing role and then how we then allow for costs in the system, I think it's really important that we have a handle, especially on some of these consulting contracts where it becomes a wants versus needs conversation. So, and especially want to compliment, Michelle, you've been a joy to work with in, in times we've done procurement. So I think really this has been more so Dr. Braebrand, an issue of expenditures. Again, that wants versus needs, we'd love to be able to do and hire outside consultants to strengthen our operations. But sometimes we can't do all that we want to do because what we need to do is reduce class sizes and things like that. So I really appreciate our Auditor General being here. And if you would mind just speaking a little bit, you'd mentioned to kind of the pros and cons to anything that's been laid out here for changes or what the Board should consider in this.
Thank you for the School Board for giving me this opportunity to chime in. And I'm sure you all understand, as the Auditor General, I could not like dictate what to be in the policy or regulations because my office would need to audit them at the end of the day. But I would like to offer some of the factors that we can consider before we make that decision. So I think first of all, I, I really appreciate that the Office of Procurement Services broadened the definition of consultant services. I think that that really add on to help the, promote the transparency about what it really means. And I think Elizabeth also mentioned earlier that it can also have the public to look at because certain situation may be potential conflict of interest situation that people are not sure. I think in the long run, it will protect our reputation and people have better understanding about how we spend those dollars. So I think I really welcome for that definition change. But the second part that I would urge the School Board to consider is the dollar threshold. And I think that Janie has pointed that out, that, that is $100,000, is that the right magic number? And my only concern is that, of course, all the School Board members who would do a very due diligence and a deep dive into each of the contracts that are presented up in front of you for approval, if that result in a lot, a large amount and if likely we could not do the deep dive that we would like to, I don't know whether it will create more benefit than maybe, that it will consume us a lot in reviewing the details of each of the contract. So I'm suggesting that maybe we can look at the demographics of those consultant services that are now fallen under this new definition and maybe broken them by buckets, like of, like how much of them is like between under 100,000, how much is between 100 to 150, so that you can make a better judgment and expectations as well about the load that will come to the School Board for approval. In terms of professional services, I think that definition is pretty straightforward already, is, I use my own term, it's like who actually need a license to come to work for FCPS, right? So I think that's pretty clean cut and I don't have further comments on that.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. I, I appreciate that too. I, I guess, based on the input you're providing, the one clarification I wanted to make sure I understood is that would we have Financial Services and Dr. Braebrand provide for us what's happened like in the last two, three or four years in terms of how many contracts under this broadened definition of consulting contracts, that, what that has been? And then we would determine from there if we would want to raise the threshold to above 150 as opposed to 100? Or is it just, so it's about setting expectations of what we can expect to see? As a point of clarification, because I, I don't think I've heard my colleagues say that we want to go into contract details. As I said earlier, I think this is more about expenditures and when we are limited in funding. And anyone who's watched this Board since I've been on it the last six budget cycles, I mean, we will harangue with each other sometimes on $100,000 here, you know, $250,000 there on our budget amendment. So each contract, when you're taking $100,000, two or three contracts and we're, we could be debating with each other of, that's a really nice thing to do, but we need to have three, you know, five more teachers and that would give us five more teachers. So, Dr. Braebrand, we don't want to spend the money on those consultants as much as we'd like to. I mean, those are why, I think, giving us the opportunity to just see what the item is and, and the merits to it. I'm married to a lawyer and Mr. Moon and, and Karen Keys-Gamara and Pat Hines, I mean, there's enough.
I'm not, I'm not married to a lawyer.
There's enough lawyers. I mean, we don't, contracts are as dense and sometimes painful to read, especially depending on your skill set. So I don't see the Board wanting to read the contracts at all. But I think we want to be well-informed and we don't want to be caught off-guard by the public saying, you guys spent your money that way and yet you told us that you were desperate for funding and that you couldn't afford to reduce class sizes. So that's where I think this helps us.
So, Ms. McLaughlin, are you advocating a change to what's being proposed here or no?
No, I, I think hearing from Esther, I, I'm pleased that the definition is considered a, a positive change and that in terms of the $100,000 threshold, I, I think that's reasonable right now. But I liked Esther's recommendation that maybe there could be just sort of a, a very high level saying, you're probably looking at X number of contracts that fall within 100,000 and less and, you know, more than, than that. And, and just an idea for the Board to be prepared what that might look like. And then, like anything else, we revise as needed.
That's what I was just going to say. After a year, I'd feel like, I'd hope this Board would feel comfortable that I could come back and go, hey, here are a couple of concerns or some tweaks to change the level if we thought it was unduly burdensome, or that we're having staff difficulties, that I would share those with you, and I will. But I'm fine with what, what we presented to you today. I appreciate Esther's insights. But I'm willing to give this a roll for a while and then come back and share if there's other concerns that we have as we implement it.
Okay, so I have, we'll go to next steps. And, and then we'll see if we have consensus to move forward with the proposal as recommended. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you. I fully support what you've just outlined, Dr. Braebrand. I would encourage that when the information comes to us, that there's a link. Strategic objectives, because that really makes it so much easier for us to make and have informed decision-making. And so that would be the only thing I would encourage.
All right, with that, if we could see, oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Schultz had a.
I think, I, I do understand staff's explanation about why they want to start one July. I do think that a running list should be provided to us for our, for our sake to understand since you're going to have another half a year of spending between now and when you want to up the transparency. The one thing I didn't get a chance to say earlier that I forgot is the search function on contracts on our website is very difficult. It's difficult to find and there is a, a justifiable feeling that when you do search, you're not finding everything. So I think that has to be looked at as well. With regard to the 100,000, I, I think people have heard me say before, you can always give away land you own. I have to credit my husband with that. But I, I appreciate that you think that that may be too, you know, too granular and it may be. I'm not willing to give any ground at this point. I'd rather determine that we're over. I'd rather determine that we're overburdened with information that we don't need, and choose to give away that land later, than, you know, make a mistake and say, eh, we don't need to see that. That's where we already are. So, it's time to pull back the reins and do a little house cleaning first. So, the list, yes, $100,000, and the search function on the website, something's got to be done on that, so.
All right, let's go to next steps, if we can call those up. We have a few. All right, provide information on percentage of FCPS contracts over $100,000 which are executed as county. Did you say county or state?
Yes.
County or state contracts? Okay, could I see a show of hands how many people support getting that information for the board? Okay, we will do that. Include joint contracts with county in quarterly report moving for, county and state? Okay, county and state in quarterly report moving forward. Meaning, joint contracts over a certain, over, over...
It's part of it.
Oh, that is, okay. Oh, it is part of it? To include the county and state in there? Okay, so do we not want to, okay, so then we can eliminate that if that's part of it? Okay. Determine feasibility of making the proposed changes earlier. So, Dr. Braybrand, I think you said that you would be looking at that?
Yeah.
And then, and then, and then you'll come back and see if it's feasible to do it sooner, or whether it's not?
Give me a couple of weeks to look at that, and I'll put something up.
Okay, with Dr. Braybrand's agreement, I don't think we need to vote on that one. Ms. McLaughlin, yeah?
Yeah, I think it's good to have it up there, because we're trying to chronicle what we did in our work session, and...
Right, I was going to leave it up there.
Yeah, okay. But I guess the...
But Dr. Braybrand's told us he's going to do it.
Earlier than July 18, I want to make sure I understood the bullet. Is it just saying that you could, even if these changes...
We could start the transparency process earlier.
Okay, yeah, okay. Consider adding requirement to include any type of contract vehicle in these guidelines. Mrs. Schultz, does that capture what you had said?
I don't, well, okay. I'm hoping we don't have to vote on that. I'm hoping everybody over there will just say yes.
Consider, wait, I'm sorry, I don't quite understand that.
I think it was a point of...
Include any type of con, oh, any type. Any type, I see.
That's not what, that's not, we all, we all know, we all know what we're talking about.
Okay, so Mrs. Schultz, I think you had a couple more, didn't you?
I did have a couple more.
Yeah, okay.
So, I did, I did have...
But you're okay with that as is?
Fine, yeah, yeah, fine, just under Megan's, leave it there to chronicle what we said. But I also had that the board should be provided a list in this current fiscal year of contract vehicles which are going to, or contracts that are going to exceed this threshold. I understand you can't change processes, and I don't mean a lot, lots of details, but I think we should just know, just with a list, what's going over that threshold this year.
So you're talking about anything from last July to July 1, 2018?
Yeah.
You want to see those?
This fiscal year, yes.
That would have exceeded this threshold. Okay, can I see a show of hands of how many people support doing that? Okay, it's the one that's highlighted there. So in other words, we'll see this year, okay. Now, Mrs. Schultz, I also had that you wanted to see the SAC MOU. I mean, this may or may not, okay, so do you want that up there?
Yeah.
Okay, let's have a conversation about that. I mean, is that an issue, to see the SAC MOU? I mean, isn't that...
I don't believe it's complete yet.
It's not complete yet. Do we have an ETA on completion? We don't. Well, I guess we can't see something that doesn't exist.
We have been working with the county, so let me follow up with Mr. Plattenberg, and then get back to you.
Can I please have that on the list, though? Because it's in all of our best interest to see that.
Okay, let's see if we have consensus to say, see SAC MOU when available, or when completed.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm seeing already, okay, so that's done. And then, who sees? And then you had asked Ms. Schultz about seeing a reference to industry standards?
Oh, I think they got that.
They got that, okay. And then you made a point about the search function, but you don't need that as a next step, or you do?
Actually, I don't know, because honestly, I think it's a little bit of a hot mess.
It is. Unfortunately, we do, that's a county resource, we don't really get to control it, and it, if we talk to the purchasing agent, she would tell you it's there as a courtesy, that it's not intended to be a file of record in any manner.
So let us, let us talk to the county.
We'll definitely pass it along, we meet with her once a month.
So what happened to our online checkbook, then? Because in the, in the, in the alternative, the other thing you could do is just have an online checkbook of everything we spend, and that way...
Financial transparency, you could search by vendor.
But, but can, in the same place where you're, I mean, is there a, can we help people with like a Hansel and Gretel popcorn trail to connect the dots, that if you can't find the contract here, you may want to search here?
So, so what, so improve...
The public accountability of the expenditure of monies on vendor contracts.
Basically, when people will be able to find the, find contracts.
Well, there's not really much point in being transparent if people can't get on the website and find it, right?
So we can make a note on our...
Public access to contracts?
Yes.
How about that? Does that work?
Yes.
Does that work for you, Dr. Braybrand? Or work on improving?
Let's put work on, and let me learn more about it, I'm not an expert on that.
Okay, let's, well, let's first of all, see if we have consensus among board members to work on improving public access to, is it lists of contracts or contracts?
I think...
Just contract, to contract, all right. See how many folks want that? You have a question?
I thought we did something like that.
We do have a financial transparency site where you could search by vendor. I think what Ms. Schultz is asking for us to do is, when you're on the contract register site, and you can't find the contract, could we make a link to our transparency site? So let us work with the county purchasing agent, because that site is owned by the county, where we can make any adjustments to our site, we'll make those linkages.
Just, for an example, like when somebody is searching my neighborhood or whatever, and we provide the link, it kicks them over to the county side, and it's their site that gives them, you know, you put in your house number. I'm sorry, if we can do the transparency that way on where do you live, we can have them kick them back to us on, look, if you can't find the contract you're looking for, here's the link, and it kicks it back our way.
Okay, I think, I think they have their direction, then. So the last one is Karen Kies-Gamara, who unfortunately had to leave. I guess I heard that slightly different, I didn't think she wanted how many so much as a sense of what kind of contracts these are.
So we use the list?
Wouldn't that be a huge list, though? I mean, what, so let me turn this to staff and see, what would, what would be reasonable? Mr. Ball, you had said that this, you could provide a report. What were you thinking, and it is unfortunate that Ms. Kies-Gamara isn't here, but what were you thinking in terms of providing us with information on contracts that fall below $100,000?
Well, we can provide the contract description and the amount.
I could give you that list for FY '17.
Oh, just do a list, then.
I would be reluctant to create to do it for a year prior, at least without looking at some more data.
List of, and consultant contracts in the past year, so past fiscal year, let's say, fiscal year or calendar year, which do you prefer?
Fiscal year, fiscal year.
Okay, the past fiscal year, okay, there we go.
So, under the expanded definition, you would get a list of contracts that included consultant services that were below the $100,000 threshold, that's what you're asking for, right?
Well, at least for now, I think we want to see what that would entail, you know, so get an example of that.
So what would that universe be?
What would that be? So can I see whether we have consensus on getting that information for the board? Okay, so that is good. So we're done with next step, so now to the major purpose or the action as far as giving the superintendent and staff the go-ahead to implement these guidelines. So I think everybody's had an opportunity to weigh in on what they like, and maybe improvements. So could I see a show of hands how many people?
Can I just ask one clarification? Because it wasn't a next step, and you said yes, but you do intend to include in the training the conflicts of interest pieces.
And we do have that included in our current procurement training, it's just not mandatory. So that's an element that we're looking at going forward.
Can we, are you going to make it mandatory?
Yes.
Okay, that's...
All right. Okay, with that, can we see a show...
With that, I can vote for it.
With a show of hands of how many people support the guidelines as written? Okay, one, two, that looks unanimous. All right, excellent. With that, we thank you very much, and this work session is adjourned, and this meeting is adjourned.